There's one every ready. And we'll call tonight's meeting to order, Cecil Township Planning Commission. At seven ten. First item on the agenda. No, I'm sorry. You didn't even yell at me. Everyone hear me better now? There we go. All right. First item on the agenda is the approval of minutes from the January eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four meeting.
I move to approve the minutes, the Planning Commission meeting minutes dated January eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion to approve in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, next on the agenda is the review of previous decisions. Jack, do you have anything for us from last month?
I do. Notice on your agendas that item number one marked in red. I was contacted today by K L H and it was requested that we table this until March. There's some question regarding the right of way from Montour Trail and they want to finalize that before they come in front of this board. So my request is that you table this tonight.
Okay. Anybody care to make a motion?
I move to table application number two zero two four dash zero 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 one, Dunn subdivision number one. I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion to table and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Carry. All right, next item on the agenda is application two zero two four dash zero 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 four, two seven five Technology Parking Edition Site Plan.
Yeah, this is. Site, site plan simply, I don't know. Joe, can you speak to this?
Yeah, from what I understand, they weren't ready to come before us tonight, so they didn't submit any revised plans. I think the, when we left here in, in January, they were kind of on, I think they were under the impression they'd be on for March. So I believe it would be, a tabling and order would be appropriate also.
Okay, I know that they picked up the permit yesterday because I gave it to them. So I apologize. I oversight on my part, so.
This is the one where there's going to be parking more than six hundred feet away from the primary building?
Correct.
Yeah, that was. It was, it was the parking, expansion of the parking. And I think the other thing we had to ask them last month was they should go to Spoa and get Spoa's blessing before they come back and get approval from us also.
And they wouldn't meet? Last month, the deadline for submission, I think, was the following?
Correct. The deadline is noon the Friday after the Planning Commission. So tomorrow would be the deadline for the March meeting.
So the question I have on that is, are we even going to be able to table this? Because we already tabled last month. What are we going to be up against?
By knowledge, they have not filed a ninety day extension. I can, I can request that, which would allow, you know, them through June. If they, depending on the date of the, the extension request.
Yeah, what was the date of the original? Application?
It's twenty twenty-four. So this had to be January. So even if we go with January.
So this should be good to the April Board of Supervisors?
January, well. Yeah, you're right. I miscounted, you're right. So it should be good through April.
Okay.
If it goes past April, then I will have them do another, or do a ninety day extension.
Okay. And does anybody want to make a motion to table them?
I'll make a motion. We table application twenty twenty-four dash zero 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 four, the two seventy-five Technology Parking Edition Site Plan.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion to table and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion table. Our application table, sorry. All right, moving on to new business. We have application two zero two four dash zero 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 three, NAM's Martial Arts Center Parking Edition Site Plan. If anybody here to represent them tonight?
See anybody from NAM's Friday here? Believe this is one of their busy nights, but. Joe, did Dan talk to you about this?
Yeah, Dan and I talked about this and, you know, we, we provided the comment letter and Dan has some communication with them. All the items that are in the February thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four letter, they're in the process of addressing and they'll have them addressed prior to the March Board of Supervisors meeting, including the stormwater management. So probably best probably to make a motion contingent upon the items of our February thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four letter being addressed.
Okay, that letter is up on your screen right now if you want to review it quickly.
Yeah, you know, a lot of stuff is administrative things, getting things shown on the plan to be in compliance.
So, Jack, if I'm not mistaken, we talked about this briefly before we started here. This was, this is about the parking addition in the back of the building.
Correct. Unique situation with them. They, there was a previous agreement with the owners of the, what, what, Joe, what do they call that? Is that Cecil, Cecil Mall or Cecil? Anyway, they could go on with Subway in the.
Yeah, right.
That the, those that primarily were the police department and others would be allowed to use that parking lot in the back. And the agreement basically said it could be asphalt or gravel. And there was some concern about how much asphalt versus how much gravel. And I believe Dan and Joe and Gateway in general allowed the gravel to extend from where the asphalt, he put that asphalt in there. So I think the parking has been resolved. There's very little parking in front, as you probably know. And since their busy nights are Monday, Wednesday and Thursday, that's when they need the parking the most. They're still allowing, I mean, the, the agreement for the, with the police department is going to stay intact, so they can use it when they have, you know, get togethers or actually training classes that they do in the judges' chambers and, and that area down there. So I think everything worked out for the better.
Yeah, as I recall, it was when the magistrate, with the magistrate's office subway and, and the, I think, physical therapy offices in there.
Yes.
They, they were looking for overflow park and they wanted to put gravel back there. And I believe it, it came through us and then went on to Board of Supervisors. They were permitted to put gravel back there, but there was to be no asphalt back there. They were going to have to come back for approval for, if they decided at a later date to pave it. But it, from what I can see, it's already been paved.
Well, actually it does say gravel or asphalt. And I can show you that, that agreement. I believe it was recorded in the, maybe it wasn't recorded, recorded deeds. I know it was a, a last minute discovery, so.
Maybe the agreement between the two, the two buildings, but I think what came through for, through the township for approval for the, that would have been probably a site plan at that point in time, was that it was gravel only. And then they were going to come back to seek additional approval if they wanted to pave it, because then you, stormwater and everything else comes into play at that point.
Right, and I believe Supervisor Cassiello, who owns the joint, or the neighboring building, worked with Dan Dizer off, of Gateway and they resolved that, that issue. But there is, and I have that agreement, I can show it to you. It does say that it can either have gravel or asphalt, so he, he's not in violation of anything.
Anybody else have any questions or? Anybody want to make a motion?
I move to approve application number two zero two four zero 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 three, NAM's Martial Arts Center Parking Edition Site Plan. With the contingency that all items listed in the February thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four letter from Gateway Engineers are addressed.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion for approval and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. All right, next item, application two zero two four dash zero 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 six, Silver Creek Revised P R D.
That's six or seven?
Six.
That letter's from Jan, or January fifth. From Shannon.
Fe, February. Yep.
Jack, thanks. This is helpful.
Want to take a minute and review that? Just tell me when to.
No, I think, you know, the, the letter's pretty much straightforward. It's mostly administrative items, you know, items of note, it's six phases instead of three phases. The density's changed, but it doesn't exceed the maximum amount. The open spaces need to be labeled. I think, I don't know how this happened, but you know, when the original approval was done, the entrance was to be three lanes. The plan shows two lanes with an island going down the middle. That needs to be returned back to its original design. And then the modification for the front setback, reduction from twenty-five feet to twenty feet, that's going to be a modification that'll have to be approved by the Board of Supervisors. But you know, everything, everything here is, you know, reasonable, I think, and I would say, make it, I recommend approval contingent upon our February fifth, two thousand and twenty-four letter items being addressed.
Anybody from Scheffler here? You want to add anything? Okay. I'm sorry, I should. Scheffler.
Well, on item seven there, is that going to be possible? If, if the front setback is reduced, if that's approved, modifications approved to keep the driveway length?
I'm Paul Scormezi, Scormezi Homes. We're working in conjunction with Miranda. We're going to develop the site. And so as we came into the project, we, we developed Windsor Woods. And so we have a twenty foot setback there and there's, there's no issues with the parking. The answer is yes, we can, we can meet that with the twenty feet and the parking of the cars there.
So the, so the garage doors are set back from the front of the, and it's giving you that extra space. What do you, what are the sidewalks, like four feet?
Sidewalks are four feet. There's a set, there's, what we're requesting is a three foot setback from the curb for the sidewalks. There'd be a total of seven feet from your curb edge to the back of your, of your sidewalk as well. That, I don't know if that's in this one or the other one, but that, that was the other request we had. What was approved previously had a seven foot setback, or not a seven foot setback, it had the sidewalk drawn at seven feet deep with another four feet, which would be eleven feet back. And that's just not, it just doesn't work when you grade stuff like that, so.
Okay, so yeah, your, front of your, the front of your garages are essentially set back off the front.
They are, yeah.
Of the house by at least seven feet.
Yeah, and, and again, you could drive Windsor Woods and see it's, you know, it's been there forever and there's, there's no issue there with regards to parking.
What's the setback? I remember, what's the setback at Sanctuary, Paul?
Well, Sanctuary is thirty-five feet. But that was because that was done as an R one district. That was done as a cluster overlay, so there were no variances there. And it wasn't as a P R D, it was too small for a P R D.
It was small.
All right. And is that, the three lanes removed in the island on entrance?
Yes, we, we did, we did have a request that we wanted to put an entry monument in there, twenty foot easement we wanted to create because it's a, it's a big subdivision with two hundred and forty-two lots. We wanted to create a beautiful entry, but I think it's a hotspot for the supervisors, so we threw, we withdrew that request. We'll figure out signage in another way to make it great.
Can we approve the modification from twenty-five to twenty, or does that have to be in front of zoning at all?
That's because for the Board of Supervisors.
Board of Supervisors, just, you know, we just make a recommendation on it, one or the other.
Yeah, that's not a variance. It was put in as a, but it, it's not a modification.
Okay. Want to see if I had any other notes? I think this is it.
I'll make a motion to approve application two zero two four zero 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 six, Silver Creek Revised P R D, contingent on all items from the February fifth, two thousand and twenty-four letter from Gateway Engineers having been addressed.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion to approve and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Do you approve, honey? I'll take that as a yes. Motion carries.
She's your alternate.
That's right.
Training.
All right, and now we're moving on to application two zero two four dash zero 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 seven, Silver Creek Phases One and Two subdivision. So you guys are up again.
Is there anything in particular you want to see? Because I know these were forwarded to you, but I can bring it up and zoom in on anything.
Why don't you go show the sheet there for Phase, Phase One and Two, Jack? Since that's what's.
Yeah, how many lots, how many lots in one and two?
Sixty-one total. Oh, I'm sorry.
Seventy-four in Phase One and Two, seventy-four in Phases Three and Four. We have a total of sixty-one lots.
Okay, the, the letter says sixty-one, it's, okay.
All of these numbers.
Keep going, keep going. Yeah. There'll be a call to sec constructed at the end of both Phase One and Phase Two, temporary call to sec.
And then Joe, Gateway has a review letter.
Yeah, our letter of February thirteenth has items here. I don't, all these items are items that are relative, mostly administrative in nature that could be addressed. I believe they've been, there's been responses provided, but we didn't issue a, a new letter yet, so. I think we're in order to recommend approval contingent upon the February thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four letter being addressed. One question I have, what's the status of the M P D S permit? Just for curiosity. Okay. Okay. Okay.
I believe I have that, that letter, I'm sorry, Joe.
That's okay.
I, it was, it was emailed out to us, we have it.
Yeah, they have it.
Say two hundred and forty?
And Joe, you don't, you don't find it an issue with the, with the lot to the south of the C T M A property?
No, that, that can be cleared up with the subdivision plan.
And the drainage that is on the grading plan for lots five oh one and five oh two?
That, that can be addressed.
Okay.
I guess it's a matter of moving a, a lot line in.
No, I was reviewing the, the letter again, make sure I hadn't missed anything. So what we're looking at is. Phase one and two is coming down the hill and then the first two streets to the right.
It was previously called Phase One, but now it's one and two. I don't know if the disconnect was Phases One, Two and Three, now there's six pages. Essentially the same.
And you said two hundred and forty-two lots total? So I think you said what, seventy-four in Phase One and Phase Two?
Yeah, well, per total, one hundred and forty-eight.
Okay.
Seventy-four each.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, sorry, I thought you meant seventy-four, I'm like that, math is not.
Anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve application two zero two four zero 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 seven, Silver Creek Phases One and Two subdivision, contingent upon all items from the February thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four letter from Gateway Engineers being addressed.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion to approve in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Don't forget your coat.
He'd remember as soon as he walked outside tonight.
Okay.
All right, there's, nothing shows under ordinances and amendments, but we do have proposed ordinance shown under discussion.
Well, quick conversation I had with Dan, I, I, he had asked me to put this on for discussion, but I also wanted to, you know, advise you that the, there are three ordinances in total here, two of which are going to be up for public hearing on March fourth at six P M. This is the one that hasn't come in front of the Planning Commission yet, and that's one of the reasons I, I sent it out to you. Joe, did Dan brief you on this?
Yeah, I mean, he did say to me that, you know, this was basically to clean up some language. It was prepared by the Solicitor's Office regarding the timing of, of ordinances, supposed to give, give flexibility to the Board of Supervisors to schedule hearings. That was the notes that I, I took from him. So it's, I guess it's a timing thing regarding changes to zoning applications.
Yeah, it looks like there's a little bit of language in there about getting things over to us for review.
Right.
And also including the Washington County Planning.
Right, and that, that is, that is our process. It does go to Washington County Planning. They're relatively quick on their turnaround, but we don't really do anything until we, we hear back from them.
So it's really just bringing the document in line to the way things have evolved.
Correct.
And, and are currently occurring.
Right.
Yeah, the only thing I saw on it, we're, again, just discussing it before the meeting, in, in D, Section Three, D one required public notice.
Yeah.
Whenever they edited the document, they, they specifically struck out the word one for one newspaper and just changed it to a newspaper, a little bit more generic wording there, gives them a little more flexibility, I assume, is what we were discussing. But then in item two, it reverts back to the old language where it says re-advertise in one newspaper. So I would recommend if it's, if they felt it's important to revise paragraph one, they should probably revise paragraph two as well.
The procedure, so the board knows, is that. Once the Board of Supervisors decides to have a public hearing or some type of hearing, conditional use, whatever. It, the, the meeting itself has to be advertised twice. Can't be more than thirty days, can't be less than seven. So we have that window to get it, the advertisement out in a publication, primarily the Washington Observer. But I also post it on the website and I also post it on Facebook. So I'm at three different places where it's being advertised. I post it on the door, as you can see, there's two right there now. That's for the March fourth meeting. And at that point, it, it has been determined that we've satisfied that requirement of advertising. Up until now, it's only been the Washington Observer. And I think that, that'll continue. But, you know, I, I agree with you, we need to be consistent.
Yeah, that, I mean, it's, I, I didn't see any other problems anywhere through. I, I didn't see any other problems anywhere through it. I thought it was, uh, well-written. I just thought it was odd that, that it was seen fit to make the one revision and not be, keep it consistent.
Yep. Good point.
Anybody else see anything? Have any notes, questions, concerns?
I agree with you, I would say as long as it's, uh, contingent, or not contingent, as long as it's consistent in the municipal planning code.
Yeah.
Which it seems to be. I would have to double check myself, but.
Yeah. So that, is the, uh, Board, are the Board of Supervisors looking for us to make a motion as far as a recommendation on this tonight, or?
Well, um,
Is this just for discussion?
At first it was for discussion. Joe, is it, I mean, it, they're the next stop for this.
Yeah, it probably wouldn't be a bad idea for the Planning Commission to make a recommendation to, uh, approve this, uh, ordinance amendments.
Okay, uh, what I can do is, um, I can redo the agenda, putting this as number four as a voting item, uh, after the meeting and, uh, you know, leave it at that. My understanding was it was just a discussion, so I may have misunderstood that.
Yeah, I'm good other, other way. I just don't want to, if they expected us to vote on it, I don't want to hold up-
Yep.
For, for something that's seemingly, um, minor.
All right, I will make this item number four, uh, proposed, uh, ordinance amending the Cecil Township Zoning Ordinance. Um, and then that'll, uh, give you the opportunity to, uh, accept it with, with the corrections as stated.
Previously, we, did we make, we made motions on that to, uh, amend the agenda, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah. Somebody want to make a motion to amend the agenda to add that item as a voting item?
I move to amend the Planning Commission agenda of February fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four to include a under new business, a number four item to be voted on, which is the, um, draft ordinance, Township of Cecil. Am- amending the-
Sections two forty dash twelve A, C and D.
Including what Joe just said.
I'll-
Um, to amend Sections two forty dash twelve A, two forty dash twelve C and two forty twelve, um, dash twelve D of the Cecil Township Zoning Ordinance as amended.
I'll second that motion.
All right, we have a motion to amend the agenda and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion carries. That being said, do I have a motion to recommend adoption of the ordinance, um, with the, uh, suggested edit, minor edit?
I'll make a motion to recommend the adoption of the amendments to the Cecil Township Zoning Ordinance, Sections two forty dash twelve A through two forty dash twelve D, uh, as, uh, as noted for revision.
Minor suggested edits, yeah.
Yes, thank you.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a, a motion to adopt, or a motion to recommend adoption and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. There you go, Jack. We saved you some work for next month.
Thank you. Nope, just sitting in. I think they're here to, uh, observe.
Okay. Would you, is there, is there anything you'd like to discuss?
Okay, have you had any success with PennDOT on Rising Road? Okay. So we're kind of both in the same boat now. Because we've, yeah, I mean, you know, we've, we've tried also thinking that maybe you would have a little more success than we did. Pardon me? Yeah, 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 no problem.
All right, uh, anything else to discuss? Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn at seven forty-three P M.
Second motion.
It's a fight for it. All right, we have a motion to adjourn and a second. Seven forty-three. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.